Good evening. At this time, we're going to go ahead and get started with this regular commission meeting for Monday, August 4th, 2025. And if I can please have the city clerk call the rule.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Colwell? Commissioner Howington?
Here.
Commissioner Lully?
Present.
Commissioner Santiago? Vice Mayor Harriet? Mayor Vila?
Here. All right, at this time, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Harriet, so he can do the invocation pledge.
All right, we'll start with the pledge, and then I'll ask Commissioner King to come up and do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would stay standing, we'll...
If you can just request the speak, and I'll turn it on.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you this evening. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. We ask that the business that is discussed here will be favorable to you. We ask that the decisions that are made will also be favorable to you and to our community and all that that come into this city and out of this city. We ask that you would see to it that what we do is good for the community. We thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for your help. You are the God above all gods, and we thank you, and we praise you. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Okay, this time, we have additions and deletions. We're going to go to presentations, awards and reports. 5A, presentation from Volusia County Stand Down 2026 Veterans Event.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, mayor, vice mayor. My name is Scott Olson, and I am the Veteran Services Director for Volusia County, and I would like to thank everybody for their time this evening, and thank everybody for taking the time to hear our request to host our Veterans Annual Stand Down at the center in Deltona in 2026. So just a little bit about our veteran population here in Volusia County. Volusia County currently has over 50,000 veterans that reside here. There's an estimated 8,000-plus veterans in the greater Deltona area. We opened up a Veteran Services office in July of 2023, and since then, I'm happy to announce and let everybody know that we've served almost 6,000 veterans out of that office. The veteran population is continuing to grow here in the state of Florida. Florida is becoming the second-largest veteran-populated state. We have slowly surpassed California, so it goes Texas, Florida, and then the state of California. So as the veteran population continues to grow here in the state, it'll continue to grow here in Volusia County and in the city of Deltona. So a little bit about our event. The Stand Down event, we gather several different resources to one location to assist the veteran community. The primary mission of the Stand Down is to provide essential services to homeless veterans and veterans that are at risk of becoming homeless. The secondary mission of the Stand Down is to foster community and camaraderie in the veteran community by providing them a place to gather, connect, share stories, and access vital resources that they're entitled to because of their sacrifices during their military service. So there's a few different ways the community can get involved. They could purchase a sponsorship. They can make a donation for the next Stand Down. Our website is linked there through that QR code. We also ask, you know, the community to get involved by helping out, volunteering for the event. We reach out to local businesses and ask them to donate meals, so that way we could feed veterans during the event, and we're always looking for community members and organizations to help with the transport of veterans who can't make it because they don't have transportation to the Stand Down. So some of our key highlights and successes from the event that happened earlier this year at the Ocean Center is we had 55 different resources onsite that were able to assist our veterans. We had 21 volunteers. We had 668 veterans sign into the event between the two days. We were able to distribute 300 bags of food that were donated from Second Harvest Food Bank. We provided lunch for over 200 veterans. Our libraries issued 50 library cards. The Lions Club conducted 267 health assessments on veterans, and they made 101 follow-up appointments for the veterans that attended the event. One of the big things that we're able to do this year is the VA's Medical Disability Exams Office was onsite for the first time, and because of that, they were able to assist veterans with their compensation and pension examinations after a veteran filed a disability claim. And anybody who is kind of familiar with the process, it could be long, it could be frustrating, and it can take anywhere from three to six months for a veteran to get a decision on their benefits. And we were able to bring resources to the event through the MDEO, and we were able to shrink that process down from three to six months to one month. So veterans were able to go there, get these exams done, and some veterans actually got adjudicated benefits in their favor onsite, and they were able to leave there with their lives changed. So that was some of our key successes for our event that we had earlier this year. So our request tonight is several community leaders and veteran organization leaders have requested that Volusia County Veteran Services bring this event to the city of Deltona. So while we were canvassing the area, we determined that the center at Deltona was the most suitable location to host this event over here on the west side of the county. So our request today is for the use of the center at Deltona, March 19th through the 21st in 2026. We're requesting a rental rate fee waiver. I'm also asking that everybody here, including yourselves, could help share the information for our new Volusia Veterans Endowment Fund. This endowment fund's primary mission is to help fund this event for not only, you know, '26, '27, whenever it gets up and running, but for future generations long after we're all probably gone. And of course, we're asking you guys, requesting that you join us in this effort to make Volusia County the most veteran-friendly county and to make the center of Deltona one of the most veteran-friendly cities to live in. So that's all I have for everybody here. I'm open for questions if you have any. If not, I appreciate your time.
Before we start with questions, can I get consensus from the commission to put this at the very next available commission meeting, since this is a presentation? Here, I got you.
Mayor, if my, if I... I forgot where I speak. If I'm allowed, I really, what I wanted to do was, after everyone speaks, this project, this event takes a long time to put together. There's a lot of volunteers that come to join the project, and they come from across the country, from California, Texas, all over the place. It takes a long time to put this project together. Right now, we're like probably halfway into the year when it should have been started earlier than that. And I know the process that we have to put it to the next agenda meeting, but if I'm allowed, I would like to, with the approval of the rest of the commissioners, I would like to request that we can make a motion, if I can make a motion to have this event approved tonight.
So just, just a point of order, hold on. Per our policies, because we know we have to go by those, if we want, we can do that during our commissioner comments. I would not have a problem with that. But during presentations, we can do consensus? We can't take any action? And I believe, city clerk, am I correct on that? But is that per policy? I just want to make sure we're following the policy.
Can we go to legal?
So that has been your past practice, is to do a consensus to bring it to a future agenda. You can deviate from that practice. The only thing that you would need to do tonight is if there is a motion in a second, you would need to open to public comment prior to taking the action, but you would be able to do so tonight.
Okay, if that's what the rest of the commission wants. I don't want to get put through something just because we didn't follow the policy. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, that's why I'm asking permission.
Okay. So I'm going to go down. If you can all turn on your mics. All right, Commissioner Santiago?
Just please confirm, what's the...
We're going down for consensus to vote on this right now, so I can open it up to the public comment.
Do we know how much this is going to cost?
That's usually why we put it for the next agenda, so we can get the information, but...
I mean, we're just voting to say yes, but we don't know what the yes is for.
No, 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 we're not voting for yes right now. We're voting to vote on if we want to do that. Okay. Commissioner Howington? Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
I'm sorry, what was your comment, mayor, so I understand?
We're voting so we can have the discussion and open...
No, I requested, I made a motion to approve it tonight now because of how long it takes...
That's what we're doing. We're getting permission, so we can vote on it now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Colwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lully?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment, so then we can have discussion. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak this last minute, so please.
Good evening, Kath, good evening, Kathy Ryan. I would rather see this go through if we're going to, and if it's going to cost any public funds or otherwise, I'd much rather see it for this event than I would for a movie thing. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? No? All right. Let's start with discussion. Anybody that wants to ask any questions? Now Commissioner Vila Vasquez, if you want to do your motion, now you're able to do it as well. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request tonight.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Vila Vasquez, second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Vice Mayor Harriet, you're on the floor next, and I believe Commissioner Howington.
No, my was to do the second.
I wholeheartedly support this. I think this is phenomenal. I know that in the past, we've, we've had a lot of other community groups, service groups, come and ask us for fee waivers and whatnot for the center, and I want to be very clear on my position on this, is that we are waiving the fee for the county, because the county is the one that's sponsoring this. We're not waiving the fee for another organization. I don't want to continue to set precedence that we just, you know, waive the fee for everybody. So I think it's important, at least for me, to point out that I am supporting this 100% and waiving the fee because it's the county doing it, and I think we need to kind of rein in some of these fee waivers for, you know, the other requests that we've gotten. But wholeheartedly, this phenomenal event, I'm excited for it next year, and, you know, anything we can do to help the veterans and support the county.
Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, mayor. Likewise, just to add a little bit about that, Scott, thank you so much for that great presentation. Thank you for all the information on how many veterans that you helped, and yeah, just count on us. I think it's a great program and can't wait to have it next year. Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody else on the board, let's go ahead and take a vote. If the city clerk can... Commissioner Colwell, did you want to say something?
Again, this vote is just for the waiver, correct?
Just for the waiver of the...
Do we have an estimate, estimated cost?
I don't believe we have an estimate right now. The question was, is two days or three days? I know it was originally, they were requesting three days, and I had made a mention when we met with the group was, keep in mind, it's not only a question of if the city doesn't garner money from the event, which is fine, but the city also does not attract any money from those days of any other outside events that may be coming in. So if the commission's direction could be at least a two-day process, but we don't know about the third day, because that tends to be a, that tends to be a lot of time at the place where we actually try to garner money. I don't know, Mark, if you know offhand, cost for three days for the, or two days for the whole center, only if you know, just...
So just point of order for clarification. We have the gentleman here from the county. Commissioner Vila Vasquez is indicating it's not three days, so can we just get clarification, please? Hold on.
There we go. Thank you so much. So the event is a two-day event. It is a Friday and a Saturday. We did originally request the Thursday for setup later on in the day, just because it helps things flow a lot better. So that was, that is what we had mentioned, but I believe, you know, it like, it is a two-day event. So if the two days are there, and you know, we're happy with that, but it does make things a lot better to set up on the day before, so.
And by the commission's direction, we'll work with them as much as we can, if we can squeak it in that extra time for setup. So certainly make it as most efficient possible.
So we're just an option for two day, or two days with an option to possibly set up?
For the evening before.
Evening, Thursday before.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez, did you still want to speak? You're good. Okay, can we please vote? No. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, seven to zero. All right, let's go to Section B, presentation of movie. If I can please have Mr. Rivera come to the podium. Joyce, do you need me to do, do we need to do the roll stuff moving forward? The request to speak. It's the second button. There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, city manager, legal team. My name is Adam Rivera. I have been involved with the film industry for 36 years. I'm a resident here of Deltona, Florida, and I come to you and preside, or present the presentation of A Mother's Christmas motion picture and the benefits that it has for the city of Deltona and its residents. The title of the film is called A Mother's Christmas. The story involves the holiday film, it's created by myself. The film features an exceptional cast, including Kathy Garver, Robert Costanzo, Robert Lozardo, John Savage, and actress Nikki Lay alongside a talented ensemble of veteran and contemporary actors. Written by Christopher Valentine, this heartfelt story follows a mother's heartfelt wish to keep her family's annual Christmas tradition alive. Her plans are threatened with a series of unfortunate events that strike one week prior to the holiday. However, a magical turnaround of events just may be the Christmas miracle she needs to make her dream come true. Here we have an ensemble of actors that we are legally allowed to share publicly. On the left, far left, we have Kathy Garver playing the role of Abigail Henderson. Her roles include, in her history of filming and television, our television series, A Family Affair, movies such as The Princess Diaries. We have legendary veteran actor Robert Costanzo. Films include such as Total Recall with Arnold Schwarzenegger, television series Soap, Who's the Boss. Nikki Lay, actress known for The Reckon, Two and a Half Men television series, followed by actor Robert Lozardo, which has been in a variety of films, television, soap operas, et cetera. Then we have legendary veteran actor John Savage, which also has an array of entertainment value in his history of his career. The story of Abigail is a mother, a wife, a daughter herself that only wants the simple things in life. One thing that is important to her is to keep the family annual tradition of being together during the Christmas holiday, but is faced with dilemmas. We do go into a breakdown of each individual actor, of what their accolades and history of filmmaking were. But we'll go right into the production plan. Our main goal is to go ahead and film in the location of Deltona, Florida, and possibly even the city of the land. It is a four-week production, starting in late November and going through the month of December of 2025. This is an experimental production, meaning it does have non-union and union SAG-AFTRA involved. The key crew involving the producers and director, starting on the far left with director James Allen Bradley, myself, creator, executive producer Adam Rivera, executive producer Scott C. Brown, production manager Michael Montgomery, writer Christopher Jewel Valentine, and associate producer Deandre Wilson. Collectively, as a whole team, we do possess over 180 years of experience in the film industry. Starting on past performances and comps, we start off just by providing three of our top candidates of the actual cast of the film. The gross worldwide box office income, starting off with actor Robert Costanzo, is at a $1.4 billion in gross. We then, on second, go with John Savage with a $371.2 million in gross, and then we end with Kathy Garver's $1.65.4 million in gross worldwide box office. With every film, you definitely need a distribution deal to make sure that it can go into fruition. We do have a letter here provided by the Camelot Studio Group, by owner James Allen Bradley, specifying his guarantees of distribution, let alone also including the two digital platforms, Tribe Digital TV and Stripes TV, and also providing a pay-per-view event for this film, A Mother's Christmas. The distribution plan, we of course have a goal of releasing the film autumn of 2026, world premiere in the city of Deltona, followed by a worldwide theatrical release, also including subscription video on demand, television on demand, advertisement on demand, and home entertainment windowing. Some of the potential networks that we do look forward to working with to have this film on multiple platforms for subscription would be Netflix, Starz, HBO, Hallmark, just to name a few. Advertisement video on demand such as NBC, Zumo, Tubi, and Roku, and for television on demand, companies like Dish, DirecTV, Hoopla, and Vimeo. The equity investors will receive the following: an executive producer credit in the film, first position in revenue waterfall, a 120% of investment return to equity investors before profit participation for any other party, backend profit participation in perpetuity pro rata and par massum, visit the set during filming during, in the city of Deltona and the land, meals with cast and crew while on location during filming, meet and greet, photo ops, and available cast may vary day by day, credited by name in IMDB's listing, an invitation to the red carpet premiere in the city of Deltona, a VIP premiere after-party, applicable IRS tax deductions, Section 181, and of course, good karma. The recoupment and premium, the 120, investors are typically paid back 120% of the initial investment before any profit sharing occurs. This 120% includes the original investment at 100% plus a 20% premium acting as interest. Profit split 50/50. Once the investors have recouped their initial investment and the premium of 120%, any remaining net profits are typically split 50/50. 50 goes to the investors. If there are multiple investors, this 50% divided among them proportionally to their individual investments. 50% goes to the production company, filmmakers. This share is then further distributed among the filmmakers, producers, and other profit participants who have backend deals such as cast and crew with deferred payments or percentage agreement. The budget breakdown with allocation of funds breaks it down just like this. 5% goes to the development, 10% goes to pre-production, 5% goes to legal fees, 50% goes to production, 20% then goes to post-production, and 10% to festivals and deliverables. The advertising marketing strategy is traditional advertising, billboards, outdoor advertising and such. We will highlight key visuals, taglines, and release dates in high-traffic areas near theaters nationwide. Billboards provide broad-based awareness and can create a sense of scale and importance for a major release. In print media, ads will be placed in targeted magazines, newspapers that align with the film's genre and audience. Print media can also reach specific other older or more niche demographics and lend a sense of credibility. We will purchase in television and radio ads on networks, radio stations that cater to the target audience. This includes talk shows, primetime TV, specific music genres on radio. Traditional broadcasting media is still highly effective for a mass reach and generating word of mouth. We do escalate to a further level of advertising, such as social medias, which all major networks and platforms are available here. The income revenue, the income revenue from all sources, whether it's theatrical, network, streaming, DVDs, video on demand, pay-per-view, ancillary rights, are all through a CAM account. A CAM account is a third-party accounting firm for the entertainment industry. There are three established and well-respected firms in the entertainment industry, and we will choose the best one that fits and benefits this actual production. In most cases, there will be an additional 1.8% charge to handle any transactions incoming and outgoing, including profit breakdowns. There will be accountability and transparency for the investor for the run of the project. The investor will have access to passwords to the CAM account. The investor can see their investment returns on a daily basis. Payouts generally are every three months, which is what is considered a residual, but sometimes can take up to six months, depending upon the collecting monies of large streaming companies, national networks, cable companies, streaming companies, and department stores. A CAM account will be set up in the near, the filming completion of the film. The investor or investment group, party, will have full access to the CAM account and their private passcode as soon as the account are open. Finally, we do want to go ahead and emphasize the benefits to the city of Deltona and its residents. The production will provide significant benefits to the city of Deltona and its local population. The project will create job security and placement opportunities, prioritizing local residents for positions within the production theme. Furthermore, we anticipate a positive economic impact on local businesses. Restaurants, shops, and other brick-and-mortar establishments will see increased patronage and revenue. We will also be offering internship opportunities for college students, allowing them to gain valuable work experience and earn course credits. This does conclude my presentation of A Mother's Christmas to the city of Deltona and its residents, and I'm open to any questions.
Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Adam Rivera, I think, thank you for the presentation. We met a few months ago, and we did speak about it. And when we did meet, I did... And when we did meet, I did say that I was not in support of the movie. Believe you said it was $200,000 or $400,000 that the city would have to put into it. This city has a lot more that we need to do for our residents, and I don't think the movie is one of them. We have flooding issues, we need sidewalks, we need a lot of infrastructure improvement in the city, and therefore I will, I cannot and will not support a movie in Deltona. Thank you, sir.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to request consensus if the commission wants to put this on the next agenda item for a vote, Vice Mayor. I saw you go on.
My preference would not be to continue it any farther.
All right. Seeing that there is no other consensus on it, we thank you for your time, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to Deltona community events. If I can please have Ms. Barker come up and give us some of the community events. You can just request a speak as well. Do you have to request?
We have a few events coming up in the next few weeks. So the first one is this Friday night, we have our Bonkers Comedy Club. That's the event. It's the first Friday of every month. Tickets are only $8 if you buy them in advance. And then on the 15th, Saturday, or Friday, the 15th, we have our movie in the park. This time, we're going to be showing 2024's Twisters. And I do want to note that the movie has been moved to Campbell Park. It's usually at Dewey. We moved it to Campbell because the sports fields are being used by some local teams. So movie times 8:30 or whenever it gets dark enough to start the film. As always, it's free. We do serve free popcorn and lemonade for as long as supplies last. And then on the 16th, Saturday night, we have our amphitheater concert series continues. It's United Grooves. This is the band that was supposed to play last month, but they had to postpone because of the weather. So that's at 7 o'clock, another free event, really fun if you haven't made it out there. And then there's a couple of big events in September that I wanted to put on everybody's calendar is the first one is Festival of Nations. This is an event that we did several years, and then we took a pause, and we're bringing it back bigger and better than ever. We're working with the Hispanic chambers to bring this event back to the city. Saturday, September 13th, it's here in the courtyard at City Hall, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There'll be cultural performances, food, a kids' zone, lots of fun. So we're just really excited to bring this event back. And then on the 20th of September, we are sponsoring the Hispanic Association's Latin Fest. That's going to be at Dewey, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You know, this has been going on for years. I think this is the 29th annual event, yep. Live music, zumba dancing, food and drink vendors, just a really fun, exciting event. So that's just a few of the things going on. If anybody ever has anything going on that they want to let the city know about, email me, cbarker@deltonafl.gov.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barker. This time, we're going to go to the consent agenda with the request of pulling E for a minor correction. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I would like to, did you say D?
E as in Edward.
Okay, I would also like to pull D as in David.
Okay. All right. Is there any motion on the table? Vice Mayor, you are up first.
Nick can go.
Hold on. Go ahead.
Yes, I make a request to, or motion to approve consent agenda items 7A through C.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Lully, second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda that have not been pulled? No? All right, can we please vote? It's seven to zero? Okay. This time, we're going to go, and if I can please have the city attorney read Section 7D as in David.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 2025-96, a resolution of the city of Deltona, Florida approving a purchase assistance award utilizing Florida Housing Finance Corporation State Housing Initiatives Partnership ship funds for the property located at 728 Vicksburg Street, Deltona, Florida, providing for implementation at an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner Vila Vascos, you pulled this one. Did you want to give us some nonsense so we can go for a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, I have two questions on this item. I just want to know, is there a certain procedure to follow as far as staff or elected officials for this loans and stuff like that? Is there like a special procedure out there that we elected officials need to follow?
As far as to apply?
As far as to apply or have a family member or a friend apply?
So family and friends are acceptable through state statute and the Florida Housing Coalition. Typically, it's reserved to family and friends and not elected officials.
And there is a, do we, we have a procedure for that policy?
Correct. We follow the state procedure.
Okay. Now, is the applicant's information or name a public information?
Yes.
And that we can find it where?
So right now, it's currently in neighborly until the resolution's passed, and it becomes public information, but I have that information if you need it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
All right. At this time, then, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Santiago, you're up first.
I'll make a motion. I hereby move to direct staff to move forward with the purchase assistance project for the property located at 728 Vicksburg Street in the amount of $51,000 for purchase assistance and $4,000 for closing costs. The property's expenditures will not exceed $55,000, and staff will utilize Florida Housing Finance Corporation ship funds to fund the purchase assistance.
Thank you for using the motion recommendation. Vice Mayor Harriet?
Second.
There's a second. So we got a motion by Commissioner Santiago, second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Is there any public comment on that? Can we please vote? Motion passes six to one. All right. This time, we're going to go to item E. The only reason I pulled it was for a minor correction. Mr. Rivera already presented the movie today, so if we can just, if we can just approve this without number two, since it was already presented today, I would entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I don't have a number two on my order.
It's okay. If it's only on mine, it's fine. So then there's nothing to pull. So I'll entertain a motion at this time for approval of the, Commissioner Lully?
Yes, I move to approve the following presentation be made before the city commission on the August 18th, 2025 regular commission meeting agenda. And on my end, it says, number one, Terry Ellis, the state of domestic violence.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Lully. Commissioner Howington?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Howington. Commissioner Caldwell, you're on the.
I was going to second it.
Okay. All right. Can we, is there a public comment? Motion passes seven to zero. This time, we're going to go to action items. While this is going on, I guess I can follow through the iPad because I want to make sure I'm not reading things I don't have here. If I can please have the city attorney read 9A.
No, it's A. Mr. Mayor, this is.
8A. Go ahead.
Item number 8A, Ordinance 24-2025, in ordinance of the city of Deltona, Florida, creating Chapter 111 Architectural and Building Design Standards and amending Section 70-30 definitions of the Land Development Code of the city of Deltona to include regulation updates and guidance regarding architectural design and aesthetics for commercial and industrial development, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date. This is the second and final reading.
All right. This time, I'll entertain a motion, and I see Vice Mayor Harriet is up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 24-2025, creating Chapter 111 Architectural and Building Design Standards and amending Section 70-30 definitions to include regulation updates of the Land Development Code of the city of Deltona at second and final reading.
Thank you for using the recommendation. Commissioner Lully, you're up next.
Yes, I second that. Thank you.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet, second by Commissioner Lully. Is there any public comment to begin discussion? All right. If there's no questions, can we please vote? Commissioner Howington, you're on the board.
I just wanted to bring up the fact that anytime we vote on something like this, we are putting ourselves at risk with SB 180. I believe that this is a good item for us to be voting on. However, we need to acknowledge that because SB 180 does have that preclusion that if one person considers this to be restrictive or burdensome, we are opening ourselves to lawsuits. So I just want to make that very clear.
Quick point of order, if I can please get clarification from the city attorney because I was under the understanding that this does not, would not include SB 180.
So it is our position that this regulation is not more burdensome, is not a more burdensome procedure because it provides clarification of some existing regulations as to design standards and is in fact less burdensome than your existing enterprise overlay district. However, there's always a risk that someone could challenge under SB 180. So that is always a risk of really any procedure in the Land Development Code. However, it is our position that it is not a more restrictive or burdensome procedure.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, Commissioner Howington?
So just to be clear, if one person withstanding decides that it is more burdensome, they could bring suit, and we could potentially have to retract, correct? Thank you.
Any other questions from the dais? All right, can we please vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. This time, we are going to action items, 9As and Alpha. If I can please have the city attorney read the resolution request.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 2025-99, a resolution of the city of Deltona, Florida authorizing the city manager or designee to approve the purchase of fire equipment, supplies, and services from Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., pursuant to a piggyback agreement from Lake County, Contract Number 22-730B, authorizing purchases in accordance with city budgets, providing for implementation at an effective date.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, and I see Commissioner Lully is on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-99.
Commissioner Howington, you're on the board.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Commissioner Lully, second by Commissioner Howington. Is there any public comment? All right. If there's no questions, can we please vote? Motion passes seven to zero. This time, we're going to go to Section 7B as in boy. If I can please have the city attorney read the amendments to the stormwater management of the land development.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 2025-97, a resolution of the city of Deltona, Florida authorizing the city manager or designee to approve a work authorization with Pegasus Engineering LLC to review and update Article 4 Stormwater of Chapter 98 Natural Resources Protection of the Land Development Code pursuant to RFQ PW-2020-08, continuing on call stormwater engineering services, providing for implementation at an effective date.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, and I see Vice Mayor is on the board.
We're on 9B, right?
9B as in boy, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to Article 4 Stormwater Management of the Land Development Code.
Okay. Commissioner Santiago, you're on the board.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet, second by Commissioner Santiago. Is there any public comment? All right. If there's no question, Commissioner Lully, you're on the board.
Can we amend that motion to talk about the dollar amount that's in the request? Just so we're good? Is that okay?
Vice Mayor Harriet, do you want to amend your motion? Did you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Commissioner Santiago, did you want to amend your second?
Okay. Is someone going to say?
Well, that's what I was waiting for.
I can't see it anymore now. It's blocked. Well, you want me to say it?
I got it.
Vice Mayor has it. He's the one that did the second.
I move to authorize the expenditure of $30,000 for the city's engineering consultant to prepare amendments to Article 4 Stormwater Management of the Land Development Code.
Okay. And you're still good with the second, Commissioner Santiago? All right. Any other questions, Commissioner Lully?
No.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. This time, if I can please have the city attorney read Section 9C as in Charlie.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an item with adder resolution, so a simple motion. This is a request to approve the reduction in fine requested by the respondent for a property located at 55 Cortland Boulevard, Deltona, Florida, 32728, with a parcel ID of 813060000030.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, and by courtesy, because this isn't District 6, Commissioner Lully, you are on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. My motion would be I move to deny the reduction in fine request by the respondent.
There is a motion to deny by Commissioner Lully. Commissioner Caldwell, you're up.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lully, second by Commissioner Caldwell. Is there any public comment? Mr. Bryan, if you can please, appreciate it. Thank you.
Albert Bryan, Deltona. I have a problem with not reducing this for one reason, one reason only. In January, y'all sat here and took a vote to find Mayor either guilty or not guilty of misusing funds in Deltona. Now, y'all did, took a four-three vote to find him guilty, but not to be able to sanction him. By that vote, what was said is that he didn't read the policy. He didn't know the policy, didn't have a clue about the policy. And for that basis, he found that he was not guilty to sanction him. What's the difference between him and a citizen in that? Hmm. But we fine this guy $25 a day. He's asking for a reduction. But we found him not guilty of misusing funds, even though we stood here at this podium and told him he had been misusing funds six months earlier. And somebody said something about who's listening to who. Well, if y'all sent him all these letters and everything else, who says he just didn't throw them in the trash thinking it was just junk mail from y'all because nobody listens to y'all? I find it very egregious that y'all don't take and reduce it to a big fat zero. Because at this right now, you're saying that this man is above everybody out here. And I find that false. He's no better than me. He's no better than anybody out here. He puts his britches on the same way. He puts his jacket on the same way. Now, he does his beard a little different than I do, but that's okay. We all have different floats. But at the end of the day, you're saying that this man is different than all these people out here. Is that really what y'all want to live with? That y'all chose to allow a guilty person to walk, but you're saying that this guy doesn't even deserve a reduction? Really? A citizen who probably fixed his problem, is that correct? He fixed a problem. Isn't that what we want? We want compliance. So now you're saying that it's not worth compliance for, and you want to still fine him 11 grand? Is that what I'm hearing? Really? So you're saying that, you know, even if we comply, you still... So you're saying that, you know, even if we comply, you still want to fine us? Even if we comply, you still want to slap us on the back of the head? And ask, what the hell are you thinking? Why are you complying with us? It would have been nice to even hear that word out of him back in January, but we didn't hear that, did we? Not at all. Not at all. And even during the last conversation about the travel plans, we didn't hear anything of an apology saying I screwed up, did we? But this guy actually fixed his problem, and yet you still want to slap him on the back of the head and say, we want your money? Interesting how that works.
Vice Mayor Harriet, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ron, what was the date that the property owner or the violation was discovered?
I don't have a date, sir, but it was 472 days in violation at $25.
From the date that the violation was discovered to the date that it was corrected?
The 472 is the date that we presented at the special magistrate, and that was the date of, they had to come into compliance.
All right, so they knew about it before the 472 days, that they had an opportunity to fix it before the 472 days?
Correct.
Okay, and what was the violation for?
This one is on the permit that expired. Now, there was a discrepancies at this, with these two permits. It's a fire case. They could have come into compliance way sooner, but dealing with the contractors, they didn't call for the inspection. We did have other code cases at the location, and did they pay the fine for those? That was a total of $17,400, just giving information.
It was related to fire prevention?
The cases we talking about right now is for private, yes, fire prevention.
At a commercial establishment?
At a commercial property. This is the Dollar General on Cortland and Doyle.
So they put the public at risk in their establishment after knowing about the violation for more than 472 days?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lully?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is Dollar Tree, right, at 55 Cortland. Dollar Tree's operating income last year was 1.887 billion with a B dollars. I don't know how to help someone who makes 1.887 billion dollars and doesn't have staff who keep up with what's required to be permitted for the, their stores and the municipalities they're located in. This was not the store's only issue for a very long time. Many of us know the other issues that the store experienced. You're making billions of dollars. You gotta be in compliance. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yes, I just did want to point out that the procedures under our code as far as a consideration of recommendation of a reduction in fines does specify the city commission may take action solely based upon the sworn application and recommendation of the code enforcement board slash special magistrate and information previously provided by the violator slash property owner to the code enforcement hearing officer in considering the application for reduction or release of lien, fine, and judgment. So I do want to just flag for you all that your decision tonight does need to be based on the record that, and the recommendation from the special magistrate. So the special magistrate has recommended this for approval. However, if you all based on your review of the record presented at special magistrate, which Mr. Ron has testified to the time it took them to comply, those are grounds that you may use to override the special magistrate's recommendation. So I just wanted to flag that for you, that you may continue to ask questions of Mr. Ron as to what it took, and the time it took, and the gravity of the violation, those sorts of items, as you consider whether or not you want to support or deny this application.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. So in accordance with our policy, as long as we are making our decision based off of the facts presented by code enforcement, we are in compliance with our policy or following our policy, even if it doesn't follow the exact recommendation of the magistrate.
That's correct. You may make your own determination that is different from the recommendation of the magistrate if it is based on the record of the case, of what was presented to the magistrate. And that you have been able, or that you are able to question Mr. Ron on tonight.
And all the facts that you shared with us just a moment ago have been presented to the magistrate?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Danny, so both the city and the magistrate are in agreement to reduce the fines.
The special magistrate recommended to 10% from the original total fine. The original total fine was $11,800. She reduced it to, her recommendation, reduction to $1,180.
And the city, your department was okay with that?
Yes, I mean, this was a fire case, and the fire marshal did present the case to them. She's not here, but she gave me the information on the case and what happened. There was a discrepancy with the permits. Yes, they could have been in compliance well before that 472 days, and even before then, because those are the dates we provided notices. Before 472 days is the compliance date from the special magistrate, and it finally came to compliance on that, you know, after those days.
Okay, there was a gas station on Deltona Boulevard, next to Sammy's, that was closed for a while, right? Remember that?
Yes.
And the reason it was closed was because they had a fire. And I received complaints from residents, because they drove by and they saw this ugly, boarded up building. And I received calls also from the owner, and his request was, I'm trying to fix my building, but as long as the city keeps fining me for these large amounts of money, I won't be able to do it. Please give me a break, so that I can fix my building. And you did. You helped them out. Now you see how beautiful that building is? It's a gas station. It's a beautiful gas station. So, you know, I, I believe in what our legal is saying, and I believe in what our department is requesting and our magistrate, you know, if he came into compliance and this was an issue about the fire. You know, it's something that, it's not under their control to take care of real quick when there's so many departments that are involved to approve this, approve that, and they cannot all come together at the same time. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Lully?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick statement. I don't feel like the motion needs to be amended that I made, but I wanted to just make a statement for the minutes and for the record that my motion was based upon the testimony and evidence presented, and not around any other anecdotal comments I may have made this evening. Thank you.
All right, can we please take a vote on the motion, which was to deny, and this, by Commissioner Lully, and there was a second by Commissioner Caldwell? The motion to deny passes four to three. All right, this time, we're gonna go into city attorney comments. Now Gemma wants to speak.
Well, I want to make sure you guys know I still, I still can speak. No, we have no updates for you all at this time, but thank you, thank you so much. And if there's any questions about anything, feel free.
Thank you. This time, we'll go to the city manager for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been meeting every other, every Monday for the last couple of months and getting some good stuff done. Just want to remind everybody that we're gonna continue keeping the band together again this Monday for a workshop where it's gonna include lobbyist registration and commission guidelines for next Monday. That's it right now. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to city commission comments. This time, we'll start with Commissioner Santiago. We're gonna go from one all the way to six.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, I just wanted to give a shout out to the City of Deltona, specifically our city manager, Adlin, our Parks Department, for an amazing back-to-school bash. It was bigger and better this year. I want to say thank you to the mayor. Commissioner Avila Vasquez, thank you so much for your help. I do know that some of you did have other, you weren't here, or other issues come up, but appreciate all the help, appreciate our sponsors, and it really was a truly amazing event to see our children get ready for our school, because I know the parents are ready. So, but thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez? There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of my comments was, you know, great job with the back-to-school. It was really packed. I felt the heat. But it was a really nice turnout. I also want to congratulate Thea King, who did the Jamaica Independence Event. I went real quick for hello, goodbye, said a few words on behalf of the city. It was really great. It was over at West Crow Park. I just didn't get a chance to eat. They cooked delicious. I also want to congratulate our firefighters and who were promoted. I also want to welcome our new firefighters that were sworn in at the last event. Shout out to Chief Schneider for such a great job that he's been doing. Employee lunch dock was very nice. I had to rush out as well, but I got a chance to eat on that one. And I also want to give a big welcome to the Key Foods supermarket. Unfortunately, I must have missed the invitation, because I didn't make it. But welcome to our neighborhood here in the City of Deltona. You're in District 4, but I'm right across the street from you, District 3. And I just also want to mention one more time, Festival of Nations, we're bringing it back. I've heard so many residents saying, we want it back. It's coming back. So far, we have 12 beautiful cultural dancers that are coming to represent different countries in the world. So please make sure you be here September 13. It's gonna be right here at the courtyard. For that, thank you everyone for showing up, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Howington?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to give a welcome to Key Foods as well. I was unable to make it, because unfortunately, when things take place during the day, I do have a day job, and so it makes it very hard. There's any way that maybe the city can try to work with some of these new organizations to try to get ribbon cuttings done, either after business hours or on a weekend? That would be helpful to those of us who have day jobs. Additional to that, let's see, I'd like to thank Public Works for adding signage at the Lake Shore Boat Dock for public safety. We had a situation last weekend where somebody pulled up on a boat and got out and was walking on the dock, and so I definitely appreciate the quick response to that. Additionally, I wanted to ask if there was a possibility that we could look into using the building that might be torn down at Lake Shore there, and possibly let the fire department use it for training purposes, and allow them to maybe do a controlled burn as part of the demolition process? As just having a house fire in my district over the past couple of weeks, I would like to make sure that our firemen stay trained up as much as possible. And if we can help with that through demolition, I would appreciate it. I don't know if I need to do consensus on that?
Yeah, can we, can we just make sure, I can ask for your consensus. Can we run that through the fire department first? Because I know when we leave here today, Commissioner Avila Vasquez, if it's not blowing up now, it's gonna be ringing because of the residents on Lake Shore. Hold on, hold on, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, I mean, your idea is great. However, for those of you who don't know the area, there are residential's right around the whole back and the side. And it's, a lot of the residents, the closest one is Lakeview, Lakeside. And I can tell you, a lot of the residents, they're seniors, and they're gonna be knocking on my door tonight. But again, thank you for suggesting to speak to Chief Schneider before.
Would you be okay with your consensus based on the...
Absolutely. And one of the things that I thought of when I was bringing this up is the fact that when a house fire occurs in Deltona, we have a lot of houses on small lots. And so we need to make sure that our firemen are prepared for those scenarios. And if we plan it ahead of time, maybe we can even work with the city to help make sure that some of the elderly residents might even have access and help maybe to go over to the senior center for the day or something to help kind of mitigate some of that risk for them.
Can I get consensus from the dais from a simple I for the controlled burn with recommendation from the fire department?
Aye.
Okay, so you have your consensus.
Thank you. And then, let's see. I wanted to mention, and she's actually out in the audience tonight. Ms. Root has graciously made an offer, I believe a couple times, to work with us on lot grading, or to potentially speak to the city about lot grading with regards to stormwater. And I would like to know if we could ask the city manager to potentially have staff work with her to potentially look at what we can do to make things better? Would that need to be a consensus as well?
I think that just goes to the city manager, because he's on the direct staff, so. Would you be okay with that? Yes, okay.
Okay, so I, Ms. Root, if you could maybe make sure that Doc has your number and information, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. And then additionally, we have previously taken a consensus vote to bring SB 180 vote for joining the coalition back. So as soon as the attorneys have that information for the final resolution, can we please make sure that that gets on the agenda based on our previous vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is all I have for tonight. Everybody have a wonderful week.
Thank you. Commissioner Caldwell, you're up next. You have nothing? Okay. Commissioner Lully?
You know what? I got nothing. Thanks, guys.
Well, we're gonna skip over Vice Mayor, so I'm just kidding. Go ahead. No? All right. The only thing I'm gonna say, and I'll make it very quick. We are starting back to school in many areas, starting next week. I know teachers went into work this week. And just keep everybody safe out there, and make sure you're looking every which way. The last thing I will say is, make sure you lock your cars. Listen, I had somebody on Sunday try to break in my house and break in one of my cars. Thankfully, they got arrested, but if my car doors weren't locked, I guess I hear Chitwood's voice consistently in my ear, lock your cars. They would have been able to get in, so please lock your cars and make sure your homes are locked as well. So in that meeting, Mr. Jordan, have a good night.